Okay, I'd like to call together, call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, April 10th. Laura, would you please call the role?
Benford. Here's Vaughn. Marcus.
Here.
Myers. Deppard. Here. Sargent.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Thank you. So, we're going to go straight to public participation since we have such a limited time. I think everyone has been advised that they have two minutes. There's a lighting system there, and when you're hitting the end of your two minutes, it will turn yellow, and then it will turn red. You know, as quickly as we can move through this would be terrific so that everyone could be, as many people could be heard. There'll be other opportunities to comment. If you're not aware, the board is very early in the process in terms of the Summit Charter application, and there's no, there's been no discussion about locations as a board. And this, so it's not, this isn't the only opportunity, and there's also email, and if we need to have other community sessions, we can do that. So, I'd like to start with the first speaker, Alex Robertson.
Hello. I appreciate the chance to speak today. My name is Alex Robertson. I have taught math at New Vista High School for seventeen years. I know you're considering some action related to a possible new charter high school, and some of the outcomes may have major effects on New Vista. Due to the similarity between New Vista's program and that of the proposed new school, it's important to consider New Vista as you make a decision. Many people think they know what our school is all about, but many of these perceptions are misinformed. At New Vista, our students experience an authentic, individualized education. If you don't know our school, this might be perceived as a lack of structure or a lack of rigor. But when students are given choice, and when their teachers have the skill and freedom to differentiate an individualized instruction, there are some deep, meaningful, and rigorous educational experiences that result. At New Vista, we have high expectations for all students. We teach and demand more independence, more responsibility for learning, and revisions or retakes on work until students get the required A or B grade. At New Vista, we have a strong commitment to equity. We teach students about current events through an equity lens. New Vista graduates have the ability to notice and respond to inequities in the world. At New Vista, we have a strong and experienced teaching staff hired through a demanding process. More than fifteen percent of our core teaching staff are nationally board certified; seventy-five percent have graduate degrees; our teachers average nearly fifteen years of teaching experience. New Vista has been incredibly successful with the work we've been doing for more than twenty years, so it's not surprising that the proposed new school is embracing many of New Vista's attributes and philosophy. New Vista needs to have the physical campus it deserves, rather than creating a new school modeled after our program that uses bond money that has been earmarked for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk Quitter?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm not here tonight to comment on whether or not the board should approve Summit's Charter application, but I do want to take a moment to discuss Summit's proposals and their suggestions to co-locate with New Vista or to swap campuses entirely. When I was first informed that Summit was submitting these ideas as actual possibilities, I was flabbergasted. I informed this leadership at Summit that, you know, while I wish you the best on this application, I can't support those proposals because I don't believe they are in the best interests of our school. My frustration only deepened after seeing the Daily Camera article where Summit had declared, even after hearing those concerns, that co-locating with us was their first choice in facilities. I later learned that we were selected due to outdated capacity reports that listed our enrollment capacity at over six hundred students. I want to be clear that we do not have three to four classrooms that are lying empty at New Vista. And while we do have some room for growth, our enrollment continues to grow, to grow. Glenn Segrew and I have been talking in more detail about our facility use, and there's a few items I'd like to address with the formula and the math that was used. To get to that number of six hundred students, we would need to have students taking classes at every moment in places like our counseling center, our drop-in computer labs, our teacher planning room, and constant use of both of our gymnasiums. We would have to completely abandon our educational model in order to make these types of numbers happen. When I look at the capacities report and substituted real numbers, realistic usage, and deleted the areas like the teacher's lounge, our real capacity is around four-hundred-and-sixty students. I'm happy to work with the board to explain this in more detail. But apart from general numbers, New Vista practices a very intentional, community-based educational model. Our use of empathy and equity in our curriculum, along with the opportunities we provide students who have struggled in the past, have led us to be recognized as both a school of opportunity and an Ashoka changemaker school. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Cruss?
Thank you. My son is a ninth grader at New Vista. In ten years of public education, this is the first year that I've heard him say, "Mom, I really like school." He's obsessed with math and science and has a growing interest in politics and history. And thanks to New Vista's program, he'll have the opportunity to take calculus as a junior and pursue numerous challenging and interesting courses and experiences. Summit Academy's mission statement includes aspects of a rigorous academic curriculum, all five of which are experiences my son has had during his first year at New Vista. New Vista serves kids who are innovative problem solvers, creative thinkers, and many of whom have not been well-served by traditional schools. And it has a twenty-five-year track record of success. Summit Academy's proposal seems to aim toward a New Vista model with more academic rigor, and yet New Vista students have been accepted at colleges including Colorado School of Mines, Cornell, Dartmouth, Middlebury, MIT, Spelman, Stanford, Tufts, UC Berkeley, UT Austin, Wellesley, Williams, many more. Of all the high schools and middle schools that I found demographics for on the BVSD website, Summit Middle School serves among the smallest percentages of Hispanic students, students who receive free or reduced lunch, English language learners, by far the smallest percentage of students who access special education services, and by far the largest percentage of students who've been designated as talented and gifted. By comparison, looking at percentages, New Vista serves almost three times as many Hispanic students, four-point-seven times as many students who receive free or reduced lunch, more than seven times as many English language learners, and ten times as many students who access special education services. Allowing Summit Academy to co-locate or swap campuses with New Vista will not benefit New Vista students. The more individualistic and entrepreneurial focus of Summit Academy would actively conflict with New Vista's focus on social justice, equity, and community building. Ideally, the board will put resources into promoting and supporting New Vista's successful innovative program and their existing vision for renovating their own building. If the Summit Academy proposal is approved, I strongly urge you to seek alternatives for their space needs that do not undermine New Vista's proven ability to serve its students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Schenken?
Hi. It really helps to hear all these statistics that we've heard so far because it just feels like it strengthens what I want to say, because more of what I'm going to say is more from the heart of the matter. So, my son is in ninth grade. He transferred to New Vista mid-year from Boulder High, which is a great school but just was not the right fit for him. He started at Boulder High very excited, and he just quickly found himself going down a dangerous path, getting himself into trouble that he didn't want to be getting into, and a lot of it was because he felt very inadequate there with large classes where he couldn't make connections, really interpersonal connections, with the teachers and the staff. And that is what I find is one of the most special things about New Vista. He was, came, went from failing to getting all As and Bs. He's able to really focus on things that are his passion at New Vista, like music and history, and it's been the most amazing experience. And I think that combining it with another school that has such different goals from a lot of the students that attend New Vista would put him in jeopardy of again starting to feel inadequate, especially if the class sizes had to increase or the focus had to change. So, I can tell you that New Vista really has changed my son's life and made him so much happier and put him on such a better path. And I think that's really, at the end of the day, what we're all looking for, for our kids. So, I just want New Vista to remain as it is, which is a place that can really serve kids who need what New Vista can offer, that no other school in Boulder Valley School District can offer. Thank you.
Michelle Moses?
Hi. I'm speaking today as both a parent and an educator. I'm deeply concerned about the proposal by Summit Academy proponents to co-locate a high school campus at New Vista High School. New Vista was founded by educators twenty-five years ago and has consistently provided BVSD students with a smaller, innovative, and engaged education model. Founded on democratic education principles based in the student-growth-and-experience-centered philosophy of John Dewey, New Vista has been honored with numerous awards for its impressive curriculum and pedagogy. Its students have the opportunity to direct their own educational paths, participate in the school's groundbreaking equity curriculum, engage in creative volunteer service and outreach through the Community Experience Program, and complete a substantive culminating capstone project in their senior year. As a parent whose child has thrived at this school, and as an education professor, I can attest to the high quality and rigor of New Vista's faculty and offerings. To be completely frank, I think the Summit Academy proposal is insulting. It minimizes New Vista's many accomplishments as a pioneering high school, serving diverse students, and it seems to co-op New Vista's educational innovations and claim them as Summit Academy's new ideas. I actually don't understand why these parents wouldn't select New Vista for their students, the successful school that we already have, that is already doing what Summit is proposing. I trust the board's collective wisdom about whether BVSD needs a charter school like Summit Academy. If you decide to support it, please do not support the proposal to co-locate with New Vista, or take over New Vista's location, or reallocate the bond funds for New Vista's renovations. Thank you.
Julie Vulkins?
Thanks for giving us the chance to talk. I don't have prepared comments. I do want to talk about how the open enrollment process gives us a chance to look at the different schools, to meet our students' needs as they're growing up through the BVSD system. That process has served us very well. My son went to Pioneer, then he went to Manhattan, and now he's at New Vista. And really, for the first time with the New Vista model, he is thriving like never before. And we chose New Vista because of the qualities that you've heard about from others today. And we intentionally did not choose Summit because Summit is a different type of school for a different type of student. I would have been a great choice for Summit. It would have felt wonderful to me there. I was exceptionally competitive. I graduated first in my class. I went on to complete a number of degrees. I taught at Middlebury College, where I had a lot of students who were just like the students that I, I was, and who would be a good fit for Summit. What I'd like to say is, we have a remarkable thing at New Vista. My son, for the first time, is not afraid to go to school, looks forward to school. He took the PSAT today, and all week long, he was excited to study for it. I was like, "Who are you, and what have you done with my child?" So, what I'd like to say is, Summit Academy, remarkable. They will have a remarkable program, and it will fit the needs of a special kind of student. It is not a good fit for us, and it's a little bit diametrically opposed to the kind of students that you meet at New Vista. If you walk the halls at any time at New Vista, you'd say, "I've landed somewhere else." So, thank you.
Sunny Zen?
On behalf of the Summit Academy team, I wish to express our gratitude to the board, to the BVSD staff, and to the DAC for the time and respect that has been given to our application to expand Summit Middle into a six-through-twelve school. We recognize what a project of this magnitude adds to your already overly full plates. I am proudly the product of BVSD schools, having attended K-12, graduating from Fairview High School, and returning as a teacher at University Hill and Horizons K-8, and then becoming principal at Horizons. My daughters also attended Boulder Valley Schools K-12, both graduating from New Vista High School. Rejoining the district as a part of the Summit Academy team has regenerated my commitment to continue the original promise of charter schools, as incubators for innovative teaching and learning that is shared with other district schools and positively impacts students from every background and widely varied abilities. The bold vision of Summit Academy continues the high expectations and high supports of all students' practice currently at Summit Middle, and has expanded the Summit community's commitment to equity through choice. Among the missives we were given by BVSD before submitting our application was to explore every option for a Summit Academy facility, including co-location. Accordingly, we looked at capacity in every building in the district and explored the possibility of co-location at New Vista High School. We acknowledge and applaud the creative programming at New Vista, I especially as a former parent, and envisioned our accelerated program, joining NVHS at one campus. BVSD, DAC, and the New Vista community have all made it very clear that this option is not desirable. The Summit Academy team has no desire to open its program in an untenable situation. Rather, we look forward to partnering with BVSD to find a suitable facility for Summit Academy, one that works for everyone. Thank you.
Laura Dombrower?
New Vista serves different kinds of learners, even traditional ones. This school offers classes that rely on verbal, and visual, and kinesthetic information organized a variety of ways. You present projects at Exhibition Day, in lieu of finals to demonstrate mastery. The capstone project for years has been the senior culminating project. A New Vista student can ease into their culminating project skills by taking part in Community Experience CE curriculum. My kids so far have completed CE's at a CU lab, where my son's work was published and he presented at a national conference, by building my daughter's website for expanding piano repertoire, and most recently with a relief organization by translating documents for housing in Puerto Rico. CE's are highly encouraged, but they're not required. Instead, you can take workshops and extra classes very early in the morning. There's independent study too, which requires more paperwork, but you have choices. In a traditional classroom, verbal information builds in a sequential, linear manner. Read this book, write this paper, take this test. That's what's considered organized, and it really works for some people. Summit's culture does not rely only on this verbal sequencing, but it is the main flavor. So, I am thrilled that Summit is not promoting capstone projects. However, even if they both use capstone projects, Summit and New Vista are very different schools at the core. The Unihill merger some years ago showed us that consolidating radically varied cultures does not work. The experiential program there is gone. As a New Vista parent, two times over, and a one-time Summit parent, I speak from experience when I say that a shared campus will not work. Moving New Vista from its current location would prove likewise devastating. Its program relies on where it is physically for all the nearby cross-institutional and mentoring relationships it has developed over the years. It's all there. If you want to change the address, you would dismantle the curriculum. Please don't. Thank you.
I'm sorry if I get this wrong. Cela Dombrower?
I'm a sophomore at New Vista and also a former student of Summit. We went around in class one time when we were getting to know each other at New Vista to see why everyone had chosen it, and it was clear that one of the top reasons was the community. I've seen more than a few reasons for this: trust, respect, and the problem-solving habits between the students and the teachers. This is incredibly important. The students trust the teachers because the teachers treat them like young adults. The students respect the teachers because the teachers respect them, and already we have an astounding base for a thriving educational environment. Whenever there is an issue, I have not seen one instance where an adult didn't sit down to discuss it with a student in a way that didn't demean their ideas or the problems they were having. New Vista consistently and actively acknowledges our voices in the educational system. It's chosen through every aspect of the school. I would also like to mention the kind of awareness that goes on where achievement is concerned. New Vista teachers are committed to seeing the students develop, and they're prepared to help them however they need support. This comes in many forms, such as a student's knowledge being measured in ways that lets them show their strength. You've probably heard that New Vista is a heavily project-based school. If a group of students collectively shows their learning best through an essay, a project, a presentation, or a test, there is no doubt that each of these students will be given the opportunity to demonstrate their understanding of the material to the teacher. It would be a mistake to compromise our program by combining with Summit or relocating. We lose not only the building, but more importantly mentors and capstone-type resources. I've learned through my classes that making changes without any real need for those changes is a great way to hinder the success of your company. To take such an ideal, working, and beautiful model of an educational environment and start again from scratch to make unnecessary changes makes me afraid that future generations of students will not be able to experience the same New Vista that I have now. But to conclude, I would like to say that New Vista would welcome any incoming freshman students from Summit with open arms. Thank you.
Eddie Dombrower?
I'm the final Dombrower you'll hear from tonight. A new charter high school is potentially a really great idea. More diversity, and choices of educational styles, and other capstone opportunity for certain specific types of learners could be more of what makes BVSD already a great school district for a variety of students. But combining schools is not a good idea. The risks heavily outweigh the benefits in attempting synergy or cleverly ill-advised relocations. Like introducing a heat source to a very cold object, they will naturally come to a middle temperature, losing at least one, if not both, of their unique values. It's already happened twice in BVSD. Not just as a loyal parent of either a Summit or a New Vista student, but as one with a deep understanding of their differences, I say this. BVSD's great strength is in its choices of schools for different learning styles, focus, sizes, and they should remain clear, independent, and all physically separate. While there may be some short-term financial value in trying to squeeze both into a single facility and even sharing some resources, it's a penny-wise, pound-foolish approach to supporting the ongoing success of New Vista's established approach and the exciting birth in figuring out of a new type of high school. Focus will be divided between figuring out how to move, make, share the space and resources, and trying to keep the New Vista student body served as well as it is now, and trying to build something new at the same time. Let the new be new on its own. No New Vista student should pay the price for our attempts at forcing synergies or clever relocations to the effort. It's not worth losing even one of those current or future students. Thank you.
Susan McVicker?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you for your tireless work and efforts in this. Personally, I was very excited to see the Summit Charter application come forward. BVSD has a remarkable reputation for opening itself up to different ways of learning, and Summit Academy, it's, it could be an awesome new way for kids to learn in a smaller environment. Very much for that. And I want to say that Boulder Valley School District has been in the "and," and we need to stay in the "and," not the "or." So, I think we can have New Vista and a Summit Academy to serve all the needs of the, of the kids. Personally, I've had my daughter graduate from New Vista. I have a son who's a sophomore there, and I can say without a doubt, New Vista saves lives, and it saves the futures of the children. More stories than you can count about kids that want to come to a smaller environment where they can be known and understood, and where they can thrive. And I certainly have seen my son turn around from being bullied in middle school and failing to becoming a student and somebody that he can believe in himself. My daughter did not do well in a big school environment, transferred to New Vista as a junior, and she went on to take Equity to the world, and she's a diversity mentor at the University of Northern Colorado, and she's a sophomore in the honors department. So, I just urge you to think of the "and" and not be in the "or," and to keep New Vista and all the other wonderful schools that are there being the best that they can be for the traits that they have. Thank you.
Chris Bell?
Hi there, I'm Chris Bell. I'm a longtime BVSD parent with kids coming up through Boulder Schools for the past twelve years or so. I served on the BVSD IT Steering Committee in 2009, and I appreciate the work you all do. This is the first time I've ever made comments to you all. My kid at New Vista is an academic achiever, and he'd fit in academically at any BVSD high school, and I think he's at the, at the right place at New Vista. The portion of the Summit High proposal that would involve displacing or encroaching on New Vista High School's campus seems incongruous with the way that BVSD typically operates, and it seems wrong. I do not want you to support a school taking over or sharing a New Vista, the New Vista High School building. I can't imagine this board supporting a hostile takeover like this, and I don't want you to do it at New Vista.
David Chilson?
Hey. So, I'm not David Chilson. I'm his son, Bo Chilson, and he let me speak, which is nice. So, I don't go to New Vista, but I am going in the fall. I've been homeschooled for the past eight years, just me and my brother, just the two of us. And I picked New Vista, I looked at many schools, Fairview, Boulder High, but I picked New Vista because of its small size and its values. And I feel like if it joins with Summit, it's going to become too big for me, and not like, I just feels like I would be overwhelmed, and that New Vista is amazing because you can talk to your teachers and work with your fellow students, and it's just, it has its own purposes and set of values, and that if it joins with a school that hasn't been gone through the process of forming those values, it won't be able to keep the same set of ideas and hopes. That's all I have to say.
And we'll have two more speakers, Karen Kafnar, and we'll end with Jennifer Schreiber.
Thank you for hearing all of our thoughts this afternoon. I'm here to urge you to reject Summit's proposal to co-locate their school at the existing New Vista campus. We live in Lyons, and we homeschooled our sons from K through eighth grade before open-enrolling them into New Vista. Our oldest son graduated in New Vista in 2011. Our middle son is a freshman there now, and our youngest son, who just took to the podium, surprising me, will start New Vista this fall. We love this school, just as it is. We chose this school for the strong fellowship that exists between the students, teachers, and staff, for its environment of tolerance and respect, and because New Vista teachers are committed to engaging students and teaching them to be excellent critical thinkers. New Vista is a remarkably unique school whose small size allows these ideals and values to flourish. Adding three hundred new Summit students to the New Vista campus would result in a lopsided partnership that would serve to benefit only the Summit community, while the New Vista community, twenty-five years in the making, would suffer. I would also like to add that I am deeply troubled by the manner in which Summit has handled this proposal, and I think it speaks volumes about why this would be an unhappy and defunct partnership. Rather than reach out to the administration or principal quitter, Summit instead published their proposal stating that New Vista was their first choice in the Daily Camera without any advance notice to New Vista. Summit has also suggested that they should have access to the $10 million currently earmarked for much-needed renovations at New Vista. As Summit's principal put it, they, quote, "have a vision of transforming that aging campus to a building that's much more innovative," end quote. New Vista's principal has clarified that Summit's intention is to build a new wing for the Summit students, which seemingly leaves the New Vista students to make do with an old and unrenovated
because you can talk to your teachers and work with your fellow students, and it's just, it has its own purposes and set of values. And that if it joins with a school that hasn't been, gone through the process of forming those values, it won't be able to keep the same set of ideas and hopes. That's all I have to say.
And we'll have two more speakers, Karen Kafnar, and we'll end with Jennifer Schreiber.
Thank you for hearing all of our thoughts this afternoon. I'm here to urge you to reject Summit's proposal to co-locate their school at the existing New Vista campus. We live in Lyons, and we homeschooled our sons from K through 8th grade before open-enrolling them into New Vista. Our oldest son graduated in New Vista in 2011. Our middle son is a freshman there now. And our youngest son, who just took to the podium, surprising me, will start New Vista this fall. We love this school, just as it is. We chose this school for the strong fellowship that exists between the students, teachers, and staff, for its environment of tolerance and respect, and because New Vista teachers are committed to engaging students and teaching them to be excellent critical thinkers. New Vista is a remarkably unique school whose small size allows these ideals and values to flourish. Adding 300 new Summit students to the New Vista campus would result in a lopsided partnership that would serve to benefit only the Summit community, while the New Vista community, 25 years in the making, would suffer. I would also like to add that I am deeply troubled by the manner in which Summit has handled this proposal, and I think it speaks volumes about why this would be an unhappy and defunct partnership. Rather than reach out to the administration or principal quitter, Summit instead published their proposal stating that New Vista was their first choice in the Daily Camera without any advance notice to New Vista. Summit has also suggested that they should have access to the $10 million currently earmarked for much-needed renovations at New Vista. As Summit's principal put it, they, quote, "have a vision of transforming that aging campus to a building that's much more innovative," end quote. New Vista's principal has clarified that Summit's intention is to build a new wing for the Summit students, which seemingly leaves the New Vista students to make do with an old and unrenovated facility. In closing, I feel strongly that Summit needs to achieve their goals for a new school without being parasitical on another high school and its long-awaited funding. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thanks for your service, and thanks for this opportunity to speak. So, yeah, what they all said, pretty much. I have also had kids for 20 years in BVSD schools. We have an amazing district. And so, I want to just add a couple of things to what has already been said. I'm sure you all know that New Vista is serving a high percentage of tag students, also talented and gifted students, 45 percent. I don't know if that's right, but I saw on the website, 45 percent. And also, New Vista has, is showing an ability to respond to our achievement gap with the socioeconomic and ethnic diversity of the students. From my experience in BVSD schools, it's really an outlier in that area, and so I want to encourage you to continue to support and strengthen and give all of the $10 million to New Vista, which, having had two students in there, those renovations are so needed. I wanted to also mention the co-location. So, both of my kids also were at BCSIS, which had a shared school building with high peaks. I know from having been through that, it was a really difficult process and had a slightly different situation, that they were combining into one building two school programs that were already pretty successful. They had to have, at the end, shared principals, and there's probably some benefit to the building co-location, but it was a really rough ride. And in terms of staffing and use of space, it is really tricky to co-locate two school programs in the same building. So, if that does end up needing to happen, which as people have said, I don't see where that space would be at New Vista, but there are, I think, like one or two models in the district that have worked, but it's a really tough process. Again, thanks for your time and your work in letting us all speak.
So, thank you all for coming and sharing your voice. For speakers who didn't want to speak and who still want to speak today, we'll have public participation again today at around 6:10 or 6:15. And that list of speakers is being transferred over, the list of speakers from right now is being transferred to the list for 6:15. There'll also be other meetings. Just for a timeline, we are scheduled now to make a decision around the proposal on April 24th or the first or second week of May, but it doesn't necessarily mean that a location will be decided on at that time. So, that's just one piece in terms of what our timing is looking like. So, thank you again for coming, and we're going into, board members, we will be grabbing dinner and then sitting at the square to listen to more about the details around the Summit application and the impact, the feedback from DAC and from staff. And then, we will be having our regular board meeting a little after 6:00. Thank you.